I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in thy name.
We'll start off with roll call. John Estrich.
Here.
Chuck Campbell.
Here.
Bridgette Hayes on here. Bill Moore.
Right.
Curtis Ward.
Here.
We do have a quorum. First off is the approval of minutes from May 4th for the regular meeting and the minutes of the postponed executive session that was scheduled for May 10th.
You made a motion to approve minutes.
John made a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting and the postponed executive session. Is there a second?
Yeah, I've seconded.
Chuck, seconded all in favor? All opposed? Motion passed? Next is the approval of claims and payroll as presented. So, claims total $194,525.57 and payroll is $51,301.71 with overtime $2,046.94.
Make a motion to approve the payroll in the council board.
Chuck made a motion to approve the claims and payroll. Is there a second?
Second.
John seconded all in favor? All opposed? Building permit number 988 for the town of Brookville. This is a permit for our, the new municipal and police department building at 405 E7th Street that was discussed at the last meeting. Mr. Ward, do you have any updates for us?
So, the county will care if the county issues a permit or not. So, they told me they were willing to issue a permit so long as the county zoning is out of our building course or building permits. There is the issue of not needing conditional use zoning. So, the county will have to file an application to a conditional use permit to use the municipal building for the county can issue a permanent location permit.
So, would anyone like to make a motion to approve this permit whether the county wants it or not? So that we can be in compliance with the rest of the residents that we require them to submit a permit?
I'll make a motion to approve the permit number 988 contingent upon completion of SaaS factory conditional use zoning.
Curtis made a motion to approve the permit for 405 E7th Street. Is there a second?
Second.
John seconded all in favor? All opposed? Motion passed?
Do you want any judgment right to follow that?
Yes. I think Caitlin sent a bunch of information to us about all the different steps that we have to go through. Thank you. So, just so everyone knows, the county permit that was issued wasn't issued correctly. So, we're gonna have to go through the steps of having a hearing and all that with the APC, just like everybody else. And then they'll issue their permit if the APC and the BZA boards approve it. Next is the local historic district map ordinance. I don't see an ordinance in our... Oh, there she is.
Sorry.
Local historic district map ordinance. I don't see an ordinance in our packet.
I sent the document. She's out, so I don't have no ordinance. We did have a meeting on Tuesday and went over, sorry. We had a meeting on Tuesday and went over the map, but I don't have an ordinance.
What's the map?
It's over. It's three days. It's still here. Sorry. I'm out of time. If you want me to read the streets, I'm probably the worst person to ask.
So, is the highlighted section, this section that the APC is closing?
Yes.
Is this home? Is this the hermitage down here?
The mall.
Yeah.
Grandstand's edge. Fairfield all the way up to, looks like Legion. Is that 12th Street? Frank's Court. 12th Street. All 12th Street, all the way through Main Street.
Just about like the last one. Except for about a close street here.
Yeah, Cliff Street from Eighth Street, Route 10. Nothing on Franklin Avenue, which is true.
And then this square area is out as well from the south of the town.
You want to vote on the map based on your observation.
Up for discussion?
They say it is.
That is.
This house, even when we put it in there, it has other houses in there.
So, generally speaking, as, well, at the last town council meeting, the council voted to ask the Historic Preservation Commission to draw a map that was from 3rd Street to 10th Street on Main Street. And they have come back now with a map that includes many streets, I don't know, maybe 10 or 11 different streets throughout Brookville. And they've just put a highlight on each of the roads, which from what I understand, the houses on both sides of that highlighted area would be in the local historic district that they are recommending. So, if I could just ask... If I could just ask... If I could just ask town council, obviously, this is not what we asked of them, so I think we can do one or two things. We can either vote to approve or disapprove this map even though we don't have an ordinance. Or we can let Lynn write the ordinance and have it come before us to vote yes or no at that point. I just want to remind the council that the preserving main street grant requires us to have a local ordinance designated before June 30th. And ordinances must be read twice unless the town council unanimously votes to suspend the rules that requires us to read them twice. So, those are all the things that I'd like the council to think about before somebody makes a motion.
So, how does the process work? We, we know we have, we have set a map that was recommended by the HPC, is that correct?
They do the recommending and we do the approving, yes.
So, what happens if they have recommended a map that we're wanting to approve?
Then I guess we would have to consider either asking for another extension from Oprah or defaulting on the preserving main street grant.
What's the cost of that?
I don't know. Gina?
I don't know. I've never done that before. I have to talk to the board.
I feel at this point, it's not on us. We've told them what we don't set. They brought something different. I really look to.
It's a third. I mean, it's a little bit more than a third of what it was last time. But it's way more than what we set, which is on the table. I mean, again, it's wanting to include in the heritage and get, you know, a few people wanting their houses in, but majority of that area down there, that's non-contributing houses in terms of historic significance. And I don't want to approve something without really knowing we can ask them to change the guidelines because I think that's the bigger thing. The map, the map to me is, is less important than the guidelines. If the guidelines were such that it's not as restrictive as what they are right now, what they're enforcing, I'd be open, open to a little bit larger map knowing that they're changing the guidelines, but without the indication of a change in the guidelines, I've went through it, other people have went through it, and I don't think that based on that conversation, we're going to do that again. That's why I'm saying.
Personally, if it's off the main street, I'm not for it.
I will say with the guidelines, we can take things out, however, the more you take out, Indiana landlords will not support it, which means we would not be in compliance with the contract. However, once that grant is closed out, you can wipe those guidelines completely out and make your own. So, that's June of 2024, which I know is a long time, but...
So, one of the other ideas that we had was to establish the local historic district on Main Street right now to fulfill all the requirements. And then the Historic Preservation Commission has the authority to add other areas, other maps, other local historic districts within Brookville, block by block, if they would like. That's one of the authorities that they have. So, that's one of the things that I, I mentioned that that's something that we should think about. You know, if they want to include the hermitage, there's no reason why that can't be included at a later date. Once the approvals are gotten, you know, from all the landowners and then they gradually then build other historic districts, maybe a block here, maybe Cliff Street later, but to just approve the Main Street at this point. But that, that idea was, was shot down, but I, I still think it's a valid idea because that way people would get used to the idea of the historic district and they would see the benefits, hopefully, of, you know, historic grants and historic tax credits. And I think that that would ease people into the idea of the, of the benefits of having a historic district. So, I think that that's still a viable solution and still be in compliance with the preserving main street grant. Earl, what do you think?
I'd have to agree with John. I mean, more readily to have in there. I'm not for that. It's not what the people want.
Chuck?
So, you're saying what you just said is we can always add to that, correct?
Yes.
In the future?
Yes.
Add what?
Can I ask a question? If neither one of you are for anything besides Main Street, then we come back and we ask for another district, you're going to deny it then?
If it's taken out of the Main Street, I'm gonna deny it. I don't think, we told them what we want.
I understand.
If they can't come up with that, that's on them. That's on the chair, you know? It's not on us.
It's not, though.
So, it's hard to, it's hard to answer that question, Jess, because if, if the historic district recommends a different map or more, more blocks or more roads, let's say four or five years down the road or three years, this board might be different.
Sure.
You know, there, we, we can't, we can't say what we're gonna do in, in three years, I don't think. Because at that time, maybe more citizens would be in, in, uh, for it. Who knows what happens?
So, and my, my thought of that is due to Main Street, I have business owners on Main Street, but we're not helping with the grant. It's also against us because there's such smaller people now. They're facing the impact of that as well. Due to Main Street, it's what we agree to do minimally. And as we, as we expand in the future, should the HPC do whatever comes after it in a different set of those guidelines for residential areas that were, you know, acceptable to us, acceptable to the public, I mean, you know, in the conversation again, but to approve it based off of the guidelines and what is in there, they may force this. And right now, when you go there and talk to them personally, you say, hey, there is, there is this ability for the HPC to waver on this Indiana only March chair and they're saying, no, we must go by the guidelines. That's it. That's why I have a problem because there's hundreds of pages of may, may not. And they're blowing up the motion script and I don't think that's fair to the residents. That's not what, it's not what I personally signed up for, for the, uh, what I voted for until the change is out. I'm not for residential.
So, would someone like to make a motion on this?
I mean, is there anything we reject from that for some reason?
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Earl seconded the motion to reject this, the temporary map from the HPC. Is there any more discussion?
So, what happens next?
Well, I would hope that they would schedule a special meeting now that they know what our decision is or what our decision might be as soon as I call for the vote. And redo the map and present a different map to us so that the ordinance can be drawn up and voted on by the dead, by the deadline. All in favor? All opposed? A motion passed to not approve this map. So, Jess, can you make sure the HPC knows that?
Yep.
Thank you. Next is the engineering bid for State Route 101 Water Main, the second quote. I didn't see that in our packet. I assume we don't have a second quote yet. Okay, let's table that until next time. Next is the 4.5 million ready grant sub project. So, like, I don't know, a half hour before this meeting, I got a copy of a SEI ready sub recipient grant agreement. I'm sure you guys haven't read it. It's pretty exciting. But I did send it to Lynn.
I know we didn't have any copies of it because I thought we were going to review it first.
I just, no, no, I just...
Oh, you did.
I mean, I printed it because, okay. Anyway, this is an agreement that SEI ready wants us to sign, but obvious, I mean, I assumed everybody wanted Lynn to look at it first. So, sent it to her. So, we'll hopefully get her opinion and, and look at that at the next meeting. Next is placement of old security camera plan. I didn't see that in our packet either, so I'm assuming we're still on hold with that.
Just one update. The compost station camera, um, they plan to use the cameras of the current land already there. I think the wastewater treatment plant security system hasn't been able to add anymore. So, they're just gonna utilize that for what they have. So, what they're gonna do as far as the street department, they haven't come back.
Okay. Okay, so we'll just table that for next time as well. Next is the county highway entrance issues. So, last Friday, Friday before, uh, we did a walkthrough with Indon and HWC and Row. And to look at the sidewalks from the redevelopment project, sidewalks of schools, everything looks pretty good except for, of course, the county highway entrance where they built the sidewalks. Their low void now scrapes and we have to correct that issue for the county. So, we talked about HWC coming up with a design to, a design to fix that problem. And that would include building up the, the entrance ramp from the highway department. And I don't know what the bill is for that. And I'm not sure if the county is going to help cover some of it or maybe do some of the work to try to get that bill down, but we're still waiting on the design. Is that, do you have anything else to add for that? Tim, do you? Does that pretty much capture it? Okay.
I have a question. Is there actual scraping on the sidewalk itself? Scrape marks?
Uh, yeah.
There is?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, that'll be another table till next time, Gina, until we solve that problem, if you don't mind. Next is rules of procedure.
I still need to copy the rules of procedure before I can add it. Someone have to send it to me because I was gonna look back and copy.
Oh, you were working that, Gina?
Yeah.
I think we need to change. Okay.
I'm gonna add it. Without any questions table, we see here for following.
No objection. Motion passed. Let's go table it. Department head terms.
I'll talk to Lynn about the department's terms and shit like these. We can move forward and make it, but we cannot make it past our terms. So, we can make their terms now till the end of 2024 if we hold it up. But if a new board comes in and is dissolving a number or any number of numbers, then they would have to be reestablished.
I, I was under the impression that it didn't matter if we extended anyone's term because this is a, uh, because they serve the pleasure of the board and it doesn't matter if we appoint them for two years. We can still fire them no matter what. So, I never really understood why we appoint people for a year. I didn't get that. I still don't really know where that's at, but, um, because that's just what we have in the state of Indiana. So, I just, I don't, I don't see why we would do that. It would just be a symbol, really. It wouldn't give them any more protections. I know you guys talked about that last time, but as far as I know, it doesn't give them any more protections. And I know that's what you're looking for.
We really don't have any peace of mind to them knowing they don't have to be re-voted back in their year.
I need a motion to extend his terms to, or longer one to, a two-year one to expire, January December 31st of 2024.
I second that motion.
So, are you saying that the appointments that we make in January 2024? Because we've already appointed these guys for a year.
To extend the, to extend the...
Extend.
...awards of this year.
Oh.
To one.
I don't know if that was the, did you ask Lynn if we could extend the current appointments? Or did you ask her if we could make the appointments, you know, for two years?
Ask if we could extend more, whatever we need to do to make it.
Did she send an email or anything about that or?
I don't have it here. No, I didn't have it at home.
Okay.
She said, it's a home, whatever we discuss. It's a custom. So, pretty much it'd be whatever you want, like I said, until a new board takes over.
I would just say I, I'd like to make sure that Lynn said it's okay if we can extend it. Extend the ones that were made in January to, to 2024. I assume that you wanted to enact this as of next year. So, when we make the appointment, it'd be for two years. But you want to extend these. I was, I did not understand that from our last meeting. I'd like to see Lynn say that in writing or at least, um, is, I'd like to at least table that until, I mean, we scheduled an executive session last week and she wants us to schedule another one next week. So, I would just like to say if we could just talk with her about that when we see her at that next executive session.
Will we put that on the list for the executive meeting, whatever we do there?
Is that something you discuss in the executive session? Get this on the list, okay?
It's not, but maybe, maybe Earl and I can talk to her after or before just to make sure. Or maybe we can ask her to send us an email so that we all understand what the, what her leading opinion is. Maybe something like that.
From what I gather, from her reply, there's three different, one is custom, ordinance, and one is authority. You guys remember the resolution?
Regularly.
Resolution. And we work under the custom. Is that correct?
Yes.
And why I understand under the custom...
Did I get this email?
Should have, yeah.
I did.
That you three got it, but we didn't?
No. I printed a copy right now.
If you don't mind.
So, you were sending it to me. Your name's on it.
Is it?
Your name's on it. Sent to all of us.
Yeah, I guess so. I mean, maybe.
But it was kind of like in the second paragraph, it wasn't at the top at any of her email.
Okay.
And it was basically, it depended on, she, and she didn't have a legal answer. It just depended on if it was custom, ordinance.
And she talked about retroactively?
That wasn't mine.
That was a bug.
Oh, you, okay. I just, I'd like to...
We, we just, if we're able to stand, to be able to...
Well, that means the appointment that we retro, that we made earlier, this would apply to that retroactively. That's, okay.
It's been a reappointment in January. It would just stand up till then.
Yeah, okay. Um, I, I would just like to say, I'm sorry if I missed the email, but I, I don't remember if John was not familiar. I'd love all of us to at least, at least be on the same page in terms of what Lynn has recommended before we vote, but that's just my opinion.
Just kind of, I'll let you send it to three of us and the whole council.
I'm not denying it. I just, I don't think very...
I guess John said it again and again.
Normally Gina prints those out for us so that we're all aware. Um, maybe Gina wasn't on it. I don't know.
So, we'll take a list till next meeting so we can discuss with Lynn?
I personally would like to, yes.
Yeah, we can keep putting it on for this.
Not in dire need, I mean.
I don't know. I'm not, I'm just, just peace of mind.
So, is there a motion to table it?
We have a motion.
Sorry. There's already a motion and a signing to approve it. My bad.
All?
All.
With all the motion.
Thank you. Next is the sale of the police department. And I think Brandon has, before we discuss, Nancy and Brandon want to say something.
So, thank you very much. Yeah, I'm Hastings. I'm the director for Main Street Brookville. And I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to talk with you about what the status of Main Street is. That's who we are. We focus on the downtown commercial district as a key part of the quality of place and economy of the whole community, the whole part of many pieces of schools, etc. So, with the police department, the Brooklyn Town Council has the perfect opportunity to make a difference in the quality of place and revitalization of the Brookville downtown commercial district. So, the first document I like to bring to your attention is this one they shared behind me. And I just highlighted three points. Brookville has been designated as a light area because of the deterioration of the buildings and because of the main streets that are there. Also, Brookville town as a whole is a low and moderate income area. So, this is why the $2 million for doing Main Street grant was the town we have to receive from the state is so key. The state is investing, their point of view is the state is investing in Brookville so that we will thrive and be a place where people want to live. The next document that I want to show you is, for you to, is this one here. So, what I'm doing is I'm laying the foundation of, of where we're at and status. So, the next document is buildings and businesses in Brookville. And as of today, I mean, obviously, it's very fluid as it's changed. But what I want to point out to you is, um, and I'm sorry, if you take a look at the map, that's there in front of you. The area that's in red, that is the Main Street Brookville recording area. So, for Main Street, Oprah, and Main Street America, we keep, we're to keep stats on these buildings because it is the, um, pulse of where we are from an economic point of view. And we can track if we're improving, if we're starting to see a decline, we can take steps to correct that, but the stats are very important. So, the buildings in that area is the first section. We have 72 commercial buildings. When you do the rest, for nonprofit or by government, for, um, apartment buildings, and then there's 16 residential. So, what I want to focus on is the 85, um, buildings that are non, that are not residential. um, buildings that are non, that are not residential. So if you go down to the second part, that's talking about the businesses that are only at street level in the recording area in the commercial board district, um, Brookville. There are reasons why people come to the downtown area. They come to the downtown area, obviously to conduct business. Usually they conduct their business at late, they have their time, they might do some other things. People come to downtown areas that live here just to walk the streets. One of the key things in walking the streets are three components. Entertainment, food and retail. So on a Friday night or a Saturday, they want to come. They'll come to town because these three things are available to them. When the 1.7 million people that utilize Brookville Lake on the average every year, if they want something to do, these are three things they pursue to come to town. So where we are right now today is we have one building, one business that's entertainment, that's Brookville Theater. We have 11 businesses where people can walk in, sit down and get some type of food they're ever with. And we have six retail stores, six, that's six. Where people would want to come in and browse the store. So Misses George is an example. Allison James is another example, Karen House. So um, if you look down at the bottom under services, we have 45 services in that area. Services are, uh, you know, medical, pharmacy, uh, the gas stations, actually it's a gas station in downtown district. Um, you know, power here, any type of services, right? Uh, and then we have seven retail businesses that um are utilized mostly by people who live in Brookville. So an example would be uh, a refrigerator at Brookville Tire Mark, for example. Uh, the pharmacy at Dorges. Um, any of that, that type of thing is what I'm classifying as services, legal, account, etc. So the point that this is showing is that Brookville does not have the differences that make a community that is defined as walkable, that bring people to the town to absorb the town. And with the police department is in the perfect location in a center town with parking right by it to uh be able to develop um and encourage people to realize their dreams of owning a business. One of the key problems that we have in Brookville is that we have plenty of buildings. We have 15 uh, or 14 that are scheduled, those are under construction that are empty, that are not bringing any income to the town of Brookville or not bringing any income to the economy. And the people that are in the entertainment, food and retail, they normally can make a goal of it. And what they expect is to be able to walk into a place that they're going to leave, to be able to live. And they can bring in their shopping and they can bring in their inventory and rent it to go. Unfortunately, in Brookville, many of the buildings do not have the electricity. Uh, they have, there have to be a lot of diesel improvement investment in capital just for them to get started. So there's plenty of people out there that want to bring in their businesses. But they just do not have the capital to be able to start a business. Many people that entrepreneurship is the foundation of our country. And they just and they want to have a business that will provide credit and provide service for the community. Retail, entertainment and uh, and some type of food. But um, they just uh, in Brookville, that opportunity is not there. So uh, Brandon, I mean Frank County Chamber and Brookville has been working on a incubator program because we want to encourage businesses to be able to uh, build a proprietary place to add a business and provide the um places that we need to make the town more walkable. So, great.
I'm going to adjust this up a little bit. It's your experience, okay? Um, yeah, so as Nancy mentioned, most of you guys know me and Frank Hall with the Chamber as well as a couple of things here now. Uh, one of them is a uh, marketing consulting business. Uh, my primary kind of income comes from my consulting fees where I deal with businesses all day long every day. Uh, most of which come being, say, very often swinging a hammer for 10 days for someone else. Uh, I don't want to run on my own, worry about stuff, right? Uh, so that's kind of what brought me to this uh, passion project, if you will, of this entrepreneurship incubator. Um, it's partnership from Chamber and Main Street. And kind of started to figure out a way to fit everybody uh in the community. So uh, from economic development to Main Street recognition to the town itself, the county, so on and so forth. Uh, the idea is kind of working up at the three different levels. So it's competition based theories. Uh, I find that most people don't know how to work on a business. They don't swing a hammer, they don't do the other stuff. And most of us know that's the hard part, right? Um, so how do we teach that? How do we market it? How do we teach you how to do a business plan? That kind of stuff that lays the groundwork for successful business. Uh, so what we're doing as a, as a joint venture is creating an incubator uh, through stages and working to be able to basically elevate each marketing plan, full business plan, three different levels, full system, whole line yards. Uh, the winner of that competition would get kind of a, a split for things. Part of that would be getting some marketing time with me. So their Google page, so their Facebook page, little websites, whatever it is that their business needs uh from a marketing standpoint. Uh, maybe that's some time with Jane Clinky or Mamley or someone from putting on their business, they can counter opposite of their books, they can legal opposite of the LLC, what does that look like? Um, still working on the details there, but um, we have a lot of local talent that we can showcase. Um, you know, that, that we have, you know, the fact that we have a marketing company here, a photography company here, or a town here, having a corporate all that. So uh, the whole program, like I said, it's a pilot program thing. We're, we're trying to start here. Uh, where you guys can come and play is this building does them. It's a fair blow to be in that space. Um, we don't really have that kind of space available. Um, and it's one of those things that, you know, the incubator is the one that if it's already the worst, if something's happening, it's definitely a good opportunity to say, hey, you know what we have this building if someone wants to run, for example, uh, running back from I have no intention of ever doing a restaurant, right? But if I did, I could say, you know what, I may even want to try it, but I don't want to sign five year lease on, on a commercial property. So I just don't do it. Instead, I move to Indianapolis and go work in 95 somewhere else, right? So we're not pulling specifically young people back into the community. Um, because we're not giving them a chance to, yeah, maybe you can take the risk out of it. Maybe they have a little uh, start that venture. And if it doesn't work, they're not out for a year lease or five year lease or whatever. They have a you know, six months or nine months and they need to create their space. And then they can determine, you know, I'm interested in buying all these other buildings possibly on Main Street or, or, you know, staying in the community, something like so. That's kind of the general idea. The incubator is something that's a passion project of mine personally, but also with the Chamber and Main Street. I just wanted to kind of drop a thing that maybe this building does learn itself well to, to what we're trying to do. Uh, from those other rotations to maybe, you know, everybody here is the same age and then town be involved, town be involved, Chamber, Main Street. If we're going to have, I don't know, we gotta have it. So, same way.
Are you guys looking to buy it?
Chamber and Main Street? Not necessarily. I mean, we don't, the Chamber's not, uh, I actually need to, I don't know what that looks like. Um, I just want to kind of throw it out there before you guys potentially sold it or talk about it. It's great to your attention. I think this is happening. You guys can do what you want. Um, but I just wanted to bring the information to you that, that we're all working on this.
What happens, I think, in the incubator stage is the building's your sale. Because the ones that are vacant, shuttered, under construction, they're not available to purchase. I mean, the landlords own them. They're willing to keep them mostly vacant and depreciate them. You know, on a taxable, but what happens when you got these, let's, let's assume all goes well, I hope it does. And you have a new business that wants to locate outside of that building, the reason the buildings that we have.
We might hope would be that in the process of this, we figure out a way to connect with us. I don't know. I think Main Street's already working on it. I'll let Nancy talk more on dealing with the property owners that are there out of my good house. Um, my hope is that while we are developing an incubator space, that, you know, we have a year or two to get some of the property owners on board. Uh, get some people to say, hey, you know what, I think the biggest challenge is, you know, as a, as a business owner or someone that's potentially wanting to start a business, you don't really know the risks. If I can go into a retail space, start a retail business, go six, eight, nine months, realize, hey, you know what, I can actually make a goal of this before I invest everything in buying a building or doing a long-term lease. Um, I think the business owners would probably be more available for that, but again, that's a, that's a Main Street thing rather than the Chamber. So, could you jump back in there?
Thanks very much. So what's, what our proposal is before you um cable this discussion or ask about your, whatever, but uh, well, actually what I am asking is if you would cable this decision. And, and that is, uh, consider keeping the police station. Our, our town needs, the, the, the Main Street grant is going to be fantastic. We already have a lot of, of more interest in Brookville that is open. But to really start the and prove the momentum, it needs, it can, it needs to start with just one building, just, just one building. There are better towns that are in the same position that we are in. They approach in different ways. Um, some of them are in Aurora, in Hornsboro, in Wadega, and also Harrison, and turning around. Their building is, is multifaceted. But what Main Street's asking the Brookville Town Council to consider is if the Brookville Town Council would start the fire in, in these buildings, the sides um renovate, the inside of buildings, white box, to where we have these uh make the town more walkable. The um let's see. The uh Brookville has great structure, great bones. People go through it and think, what a wonderful town this is. We have the Brookville Town Council has the perfect opportunity to start the process of making their town more walkable and to make a difference in our community.
Thank you. Thank you Nancy. Thank you, Rachel.
Or, or did you put, or you guys were posting, right? The worst organization money. I mean, you, you mentioned White House and you mentioned the, the stuff on the website.
We're, we're, I'm interested in putting money to this.
Okay.
Something like that, where you mentioned it last week.
Brookville, are you willing to buy it?
I don't know. Todd said he was interested. He wanted to look into it. We thought, helping out with funding.
Money is a, it's a.
Something that's evolving as we speak.
All that cost money. The building pays off with 1.5, 1.35. Um, we had two weeks before we discussed, you know, a lot of funding for the police. And Terry and I had discussed a long time ago when we first started the prison process. So we're looking at the street department selling that, allowing the fund that new, that new building, which still needs quite a bit of stuff added to it. And that was based off the initial assessment that Terry did years, a year ago. So my, my thought is is that, you know, if you turn this over to someone um, who could own the property, pay taxes on the property, it should be bringing in somewhere on 35. Hmm, about $3,000 to do our property taxes based off the assessment of where the bench was next door. Just three levels, but this is four different sets. The building has the parking unit back, holding back. So similar, let's assume 3,000 over 10 years, it's 30,000, you know, due for going revenue, both to us, the schools in the county. Uh, because we're going to operate in zero, plus we're going to put in money for redevelopment uh, in on that building. At a pretty substantial cost because it brings a lot of improvements. Um, to build an incubator for businesses that may or may not be able to keep in Brookville because there's not space. I'm concerned to be, build a business and then they relocate to another community with so much staff that is now they've been able to do that and Brookville's on the hook for that.
I think that um, what we, what we could consider is that um, I'm, I'm not sure that this council has said we don't have any, because I'm pretty sure everything that this council voted for for the police department was funded because there's plenty of cash reserves. So I completely disagree with the assessment that we're struggling with on it because we approved it. It was just an hour of an additional preparation. So I'd like to correct the record on that one. Um, the second thing I would like to say is that, uh, obviously redevelopment commission is committed to uh, developing, redeveloping commercial buildings. I don't think that there is an emergency situation and we have to sell this building right away. Um, there's no reason why the town can't partner with other community leaders like the Chamber, like Main Street, like the Franklin County Community Foundation to help the people in this town that have great ideas to start a business. They just need a little bit of training, a little step up. Uh, I think that committing to those people is something that the town council should consider um, doing. Uh, especially because if something happens or if it doesn't work out or it's vacant for too long, we can always sell it when it comes to that time. But prematurely voting to sell the building now, when we have people out here that want to use it, I think is something that we should look at. In addition, there are so many other programs out there uh, that can help motivate uh, small business. I found a rural business development grant project from USDA that I just found um, recently. And I just got in contact with the um, with the person in charge of it today or yesterday, something very recent. And there's just a learning curve that this council needs to go through to figure out what is out there in the world to help us. We want to invigorate small business. We want to invest in the people in this town. And I think this is a perfect way that we can start to show the, the people that live here that we're concerned about their future and we're going to do what we can in our heart. Obviously, it's up to them to, to do all the work. Uh, but I, I just think that this town council should, should help those people.
I think it's a little contradictory though to, for us to deny a thousand dollar waiver on a water tap to a nonprofit because they're taking the policy of not using tax dollars to support nonprofits. Then in the same breath, say only support Main Street or the Chamber with this, this idea.
Supporting Main Street and the Chamber is not, is not an individual person. This is, that is a commitment to an overall community um, focus.
So it's a $50 donation to the, the house pack.
Okay. Do you have a motion, Curtis?
I'm still discussing it, but.
Do you have a motion?
I'm still discussing it. I was still discussing.
I don't think you were discussing anything, but do you have a motion?
I have a discussion to do about this.
Wonderful.
Yeah, this building would require us to put money into it to make it ready for someone to.
The redevelopment.
The redevelopment would do that.
Yeah, that's not happening.
Okay, and the building right next across the parking lot, Rosenburgers, the old Rosenburgers building. That's prime location as well. Does anybody intend to buy that or do we know? I don't even know if they want to.
Yes, Major's made communication with Man and the Acty. Decide they own the building as far as possibilities and what can be done.
I'm sorry, who owns it?
The names, well.
Why does it matter?
It's a business that owns it, but Man and the Acty.
It's still 1.4%.
I'm sorry.
The building is still 1.4%.
So let's focus on the police department building.
Well, you've got, if you're going to talk about apples, we got kicked out, it's all the same ask. We're talking about prime location, it's got a nice parking lot next to it. I'm talking about the building across the parking lot from that. Why should a town itself be liable to hold on to a building where we can get funds from selling that building and move on with other future things? I don't think we should be responsible to basically, oh, I hate, I don't want to use the word, to fund somebody freely, to live in a building, to use this business is a great idea. If someone wants to buy that building and do that, I don't think the town should be responsible for that.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think we have a difference here, looking at short game or long game. The short game is having somebody buy it right now and paying us $3,000 property tax. The long game is that we start businesses in there, from there that flower out to other empty storefronts. And instead of $3,000 a year, we get $10,000 a year, and that develops something more.
And they're still paying property taxes, so it's, I mean, they're still, anything is still paying property taxes on it. And they're not allowed to sell, then that's another story, is there not?
Well, right, but our goal though, isn't our goal to fill the empty storefronts? Because I'm pretty sure that the public someday will.
The vacant property owner that lives out of air, out of state, doesn't want anyone there.
Maybe if this business starts in the least part of the building, then it gets invested into Rosenburgers building. We're just giving a hand, we're given a possibility for a drink. I can't understand your short side in this. Because you're a businessman.
I know how expensive it is to repair it. And you're looking at over a hundred grand.
But it's redevelopment that is wanting to help with this, it's not the town, it's redevelopment.
Still, you put a hundred thousand dollars, you can put a redevelopment.
You bought it off course for a million dollars.
Okay, okay, let's keep this about the police department, go ahead Nancy.
I do also just want to throw out there from the redevelopment side of things. If this doesn't work three years from now, redevelopment has put money into this building. You said, you know what, it didn't work, now let's settle it. Redevelopment is going to fix this building, now it's worth more than 1.25 or 3.45.
Rebuilding doesn't, I don't think that.
But they're looking to help put money into it, so repair it, to renovate it and make it nicer. So if.
The best case scenario would be to do an interloper where redevelopment would pay the praise value cap and redevelopment can do it, at that point, do what they will. For a dollar or for anything, the town is under a different set of rules and regulations. We can't do tenants, I don't think that you guys are supposed to be where you're at for the zero dollar rent. Don't think that that falls.
Nobody says zero dollar rent.
They are paying zero, but right now, Main Street is.
Oh, sorry.
And I don't think that that's necessarily something that we should be doing because you're supposed to give it at market rate, but you can't just, should have been, you should be paying in or you can fund it some other way than what we're doing now. So I'm saying if there's a whole set of loopholes that you guys aren't considering. At the end of the day, I'd rather take the money, if redevelopment wants to buy it, show up, auction it, buy it, give that money as earmarks to the police department to do what they will, like we discussed with Terry and Lenny.
All right, so Curtis, I mean, any time you can, we've had a conversation with you as to what Main Street sold versus and why the.
They asked me, I don't want to make sure, and this is a word I've got on the air.
No, I understand that, but in your comment about the referee. This is the one thing that I know, that the other communities that have been in this situation that Brooklyn finds itself in with 14 vacant buildings, it has been consistently the municipality that has been the initiator of the change in the community. So perfect opportunity is the Brooklyn Town Council's decision. Major will keep moving forward. I just didn't want the Brooklyn Town Council to make such an opportunity to have the power to say, you know, changing our town around for the benefit of the people.
I'd like to move that we continue this conversation, not only with redevelopment, but the Chamber, and continue to mature this idea to see if this is something that would possibly benefit Brooklyn as there is no rush because our new building clearly won't be finished for several months. And so I just, I would like to make a move to table and mature this idea about the police department and the future of it.
Were you making a motion?
I did, I did, I made the motion to mature this idea and not for the police department to figure out what the end result we should do. Because obviously, this is a, I mean, that was a motion, is there a second?
Second.
John seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. We'll be table on this and furthering the discussion on what we should do with the police department. Thank you. Next is the DISG golf project update.
I haven't stuck out a town, so I'm excited.
So let's table that for next time. Next is the CF1 for Valley House and Whitewater Partners.
Good for you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Gina and I mistakenly put that on there, I apologize. I marked out number two, number seven, number eight, that was my bad. I shouldn't have sent that to, that was my working agenda and I sent that to her incorrectly, my bad.
So cross that one, Gina?
So just crossing out, yeah, two, seven and eight. Sorry, so the next one is number three, CF1 for Valley House Flats and Whitewater Partners. I don't see that.
I did not receive updated CF1s.
Okay, it's okay, there's no.
What else is there?
So this, oh my God.
I thought we did not have to sign those or approve those, so I was sorry.
We don't, and I just wanted, the board should decide that. We don't have to, but they should decide. Okay, so the CF1 is the paper that Valley House Flats and Whitewater Partners have to submit to the county every year for their tax abatement. And that is the paper that talks about their assessed values and what their, what dollar amounts that are being abated for this year, which is the second year of their 10-year abatement. And it's all filed on this one piece of paper. And on the back of it, there is an opportunity for the town council to sign it and look at it. But, you know, this is the first time I'm looking at it, so I sent it to Lynn and she says, on the back of the CF1, it states the board may determine substantial compliance not later than 45 days after filing. So in theory, it can be filed and because board approval is not mandatory, the board may, quote unquote, decide not to review it. If the board disapproves it within the 45 days, there is the notice and the hearing that is required. She says, I view it to be similar to filing income taxes. There is a deadline to file, but that does not mean the IRS is going to approve the filing. So when Bruce Ripley turned these in, I spoke with the auditor and the assessor and they both said it's the second time they turned them in, the second one, they did accept and said it was in compliance. So I just wanted to bring this to the board so the board could review it and determine whether you want to approve it or not. You don't, we don't have to, we don't even have to review it, it's not mandatory. So I think we'll just have to table this until next week and then we'll send all those out. So we'll table that. Next is the Johnson Mobile Home Park contract.
This has been circulating, I think, for a while, at least a year and a half. Contract was drawn up and sent to Grant Reely's last year, but then it kind of died there. And I think actually Tammy took it in too before Grant.
Yes, Tammy originally wrote this up, it's kind of been going on for a couple of years. We just never, we just never had a contract written up for it that it does approve. Dom's never seen anything that we've written, so we actually, we need to have a contract first, let Dom take a look at it, and if we're both in agreement, then, you know, it's up to the board. But I think what, I guess what we need tonight to know is just that the board's still in favor of doing this. What he wants to do is he wants to put regular meters into all the, all the meter pits that he has for every line and have us redo them. So that's basically for now, just to make you know if the board still wants to pursue this and if the look of that direction is fine, we'll get the contract finished and go from there.
Is there any cost to the town for the additional meters?
No, Dom's going to pay for everything. There's no cost to the town whatsoever, except for the labor to put the meters in. The guy's allowed to put the meters in originally, but then that's it. So he's agreed to purchase the meters and everything.
So Tammy, has he seen this contract?
No, we haven't.
Okay, so this is just something Tammy wrote?
It was just, it was her first draft and I did some struggling on it and it didn't go anywhere from there, so.
Okay, so basically, in the event of a water leak, the Mobile Home Park would be responsible to repair it in a reasonable time. But if the town receives a call about frozen water lines, the owner shall be responsible for thawing the line, right?
Yes.
And then that's it?
It's basically, the way I would like to see the contract written would be to, that we read the meters and that's it.
Gotcha.
We don't take over the mains, we don't take over anything. And I had my last talk with Dom, he's okay with that, but there, we've come across a ton of things that may have to be discussed and that's like, I don't know how he does this trash pickup right now. I think we could add trash pickup to each individual homeowner there. I think he may use dumpsters at this time, but I'm not sure, I haven't talked to Dom's office, but you know, there's some of the other options that we can discuss that were brought out. So that's, that's plenty of the contract.
And the other part that's not in the contract is if there's a difference between the 44 meters
Yes.
and the main meter that we normally charge him. If there's a difference in those, that he would still be responsible to pay it and then fix whatever leak, I assume, would be somewhere.
Now, there would be, there would be water going somewhere.
Right, and that would be his responsibility to find and fix, not the town's.
Right.
Okay, that would be great to include that in here too, in the trash. I don't know how you guys feel, if you want to continue this negotiation or have Lynn take a look and.
We'd really do a contract first and then let Dom take a look at it.
Yeah.
Not likely to see that.
Right. So my suggestion was just, let's get this council to figure out if we want to move forward with this, with the changes that we kind of talked about and have Lynn revamp this and let's move this project along and figure out what we're going to do.
I'm going to motion to approve the contract if your changes are noted.
Well, Lynn hasn't seen this.
To send to Lynn for.
To send, okay, great, is there a second?
Motion passed.
Chuck seconded, all in favor to send this to Lynn for review and include our comments? All opposed, motion passed. Next is Grant Reely's retirement. So Grant Reely is our street department superintendent and he has sent us a letter. This letter is to inform you of my retirement from the Brooklyn Street Department. I'm planning on my last day of work being September 29th, 2023, starting July 17th. My plan is to be in and out of the office and we will be out of town from August 23rd to September 20th. Our daughter and her husband are expecting their second child in Alaska, but I will always be available through phone or email. I can't thank everyone enough, past and present, for the opportunity you have given me for the nearly, the last 20 years, it has been an honor and privilege. Thank you sincerely, Brent Reely. Thank you Brent for all your service to our town.
Been a good man.
Can I get a motion to approve this retirement?
I'm going to make a motion to approve it.
John made a motion to approve Brent Reely's retirement, is there a second?
All seconded.
Curtis seconded, all in favor? All opposed, motion passed. Salary ordinance calls out serving on call, I didn't want to include that either. Did you want to talk about that Gina, I don't?
We can't, so we had a situation where one of the officers was on call out, but he knows the statute ordinance and in the policy handbook, they put, you put a handbook, we don't have section referring to that. When I spoke to Assistant Chief Stray about it, he said it was a recommendation from a former attorney, Greg Reeves, who would shorten it. He doesn't foresee that being in the issue of the future, but council would like it added. I did contact our HR representative and she said they could work on getting that language added if you wanted to add to the statute ordinance. I don't know if this is a good word.
Oh, well, I think if it's happened before and it's not in the policy, I think we should add it. I mean, just so that we, everybody's aware, it can always happen again. I'm just not sure of all the things to think about when it comes to a call out policy. So hopefully Kristin has some ideas.
And that I can work with Assistant Chief Stray to, he has those schedules.
Okay, does anybody have any comments? Okay. Okay, next, we're skipping seven and eight, that's my bad. Number nine is wastewater hire. So we, okay.
We put out an ad for wastewater operator. We interviewed handful candidates, Damon Ballman. He's who we would like to offer the position to, to myself, myself, Tammy, and why you interviewed him. He has a degree in environmental.
Studies?
Sure.
It's on the paper, it's on the paper.
He interned at a waste park land in Northern Kentucky. So we think that he's very much qualified.
Do we need a motion to hire?
We need a motion to make an offer to Damon Ballman.
I made a motion to hire Dom.
John made a motion to hire Damon Ballman, is there a second?
No second.
Chuck seconded, all in favor? All opposed, motion carried. All opposed, motion carried. Next is fire protection contracts.
So every year before budget time, we send fire protection contract proposals to Brookfield Township, Highland Township, Butler Township. Every eight years, we increase the annual contract by two and a half percent. Last year, I think Highland Township actually increased their amounts for their DLGF rep. So last year their amount was $2,500. I think I put the wrong sheet in front of you. So their amount actually proposing for, their proposal for 2024 would be $2,563. The proposal for Brookfield Township would be $23,064. And the proposal for Butler Township would be $2,180. So if council wishes to use that two and a half percent increase, I can get letters and proposed contracts to those township trustees for their budget, maybe in the rural, of their boards.
So they sign first and then it comes back to us to sign?
Correct.
Okay. And this is from January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2024?
Correct.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'm making a motion to approve.
Earl made a motion to approve all three contracts or to get the signatures as stated by Gina. Is there a second?
Second.
John seconded, all in favor? All opposed, motion passed. Next is building permit number 987, Kevin Hunter. This is for 416 East Sixth Street. Proposed use is a garage, new pool, garage with awning, new pool, and etc. Please see the drawing. So Tammy, is the issue with setbacks, do you want to inform them about this?
The, there's no issue with the garage and the awning. There's an issue with the pool. The pool is supposed to be 16 feet away from property line and 10 feet away from the house. So there isn't enough room to put the pool where it wants to, but it could also, you could pursue a variance on the county. So if the work wanted to, they could pass a contingent upon approval from the county or however they want to do that. But the pool just wouldn't fit, or it's at right now without a variance.
Did you talk to him at all about possibly changing the location of the pool so it does fit?
He did come to the meeting this evening because he knew this might be an issue. So if he would, he wanted to answer?
Sure.
There's no room to put it anywhere else.
There is not?
No, it's too small for a lot.
And how big is the pool?
It's just going to be 18 foot long around.
Do you have a pool there already?
To put that, we're gonna have to move the garage.
The existing pool is within, it's nearly the same setbacks that we're closing. The existing one was similar setbacks that we're closing now.
Correct.
Correct.
How did, how did you get the other pool in?
I, I got it after again and they inspected it. The other, the other pool was saved where it was put the garage.
Oh.
It wasn't saved.
So what's the setback to the pool?
It is 16 feet from the property line and 12 feet from the house, or the building. That's what the setback is.
Is it not, I'm beginning to?
His old pool was about five feet wide. In 2007.
Seven, okay.
The old pool was seven, Kevin?
Yes, sir.
But he said it was where the garage is at.
Please?
He said it was where the garage is at, in the, in the back.
Garage in the virtue store, that's what I asked.
Basically, I would argue, we moved from four where it was existing to four towards Sixth Street, but we don't know. Because it lived right across the street from me, I know what you're talking about. Well, we could always pass a contingent upon him getting permission.
Correct. We could pass a contingent upon him getting a permit.
Why does the pool have to be so far away from the house and property line? Is that for safety?
It's part of county code, I don't know why it was written like that. I don't know, I know.
Butler?
Yes. I think the reason for being so far from the house is because of the issues with his house and the pool.
Oh.
Are you still going to have your privacy fence put back up?
Yes.
That's good, though.
So does a fence go around this pool also, or no?
Before, you had a privacy fence around, you couldn't even see it from early.
But is it required to put a fence around it, a pool?
Yeah, if it's four foot high, there's not a requirement.
There's not a requirement, is it four foot high?
Yes.
Okay, so no requirement for a fence, okay.
So another, I just wanted to point out this letter. Mr. from that county also sent in a letter as a sample. She said, should he wish to file a variance, that the town could do a similar letter as the sample, basically stating they're not going to oppose or dispute the decision of ABC for the variance, which I guess she would say, anyway, if you're doing a contingent upon the pool. Absolutely.
I, normally I just write that in at the, on the remarks section, if there's a. But does she want the letter, do we really have to do a letter? She does, okay.
I, just in speaking to Mr. and Mrs. Hunter, it was brought up that they, she brought up this letter. So I called her and asked her if I could see that sample.
I see.
Just so we could see what exactly maybe needed.
Okay.
I'm making a motion to reverse this contingent on variance.
So we wouldn't, we wouldn't oppose their petition for variance, I don't think. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Earl seconded to approve application 987 for Kevin Hunter. Is there, all in favor? All opposed, motion passed.
Good luck, Kevin.
Just quick question, are we able to, were you able to approve the garage, all right? Were you able to approve the garage, there's no issue with that?
Yeah, there's no issue with the garage.
Are you wanting us to approve, would you, would you prefer that we approved the garage without the pool, the pool with variance?
Yes.
That we start on the garage, otherwise we have to go through the variance process?
Yes.
I'm making that motion.
All seconded.
What's the motion?
The motion is to approve the garage permit. And then to, to start and approve the, the pool permit with the subject of variance.
Oh, but it's on the same permit, is that okay? There's not another separate permit?
He got the pool, two different permits with the county law, we're going to trans- submit. Okay.
Okay, so I put contingent on county variance for the pool and then I'll put full approval for the garage. How about that?
Is that a motion you?
One is a motion, I'll make a motion.
Sorry, the, the motion is to fully approve the garage, is there?
I said I'll second that.
What are your ways of looking?
All in favor?
That's what I wrote.
All opposed, motion carried.
And then Kevin, are you applying for the, can I tell you the sidewalk replacement? Are you talking to the sidewalk places to place the thumb?
As well.
Okay, just making sure you, yes.
Next is building permit 989 Dalton Beer. This is for 944 Cliff Street. It is a storage shed 12 by 24 and a fence in the backyard. 12 by 24, okay. And this looks like it's four feet from the property line and?
He needs, he needs the setbacks.
Okay.
And then the fence, I measured it, it is out of the roadway in the alley. So the fence and the shed, both are compliant, so I mean, it's our setback, so I think it's, it's okay.
Great.
Making a motion, will you approve it?
John made a motion to approve the storage shed and fence in the backyard for Dalton Beer. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Chuck seconded, all in favor? All opposed, motion carried. Next is building permit 990 for Rosalyn Thompson. This is at 233 Franklin Avenue. This is to build a new garage and shed, 15 by 20 garage with metal siding and roof.
He needs the setbacks, so there's not, there's not a problem, yes.
You said he didn't mean?
Yes. I'm making a motion to approve.
Yes, sir.
Did he already apply for the county?
He wrote in that paperwork with that drawing, so I just submitted that. But he has the, I just said he put all his paperwork together and he turned it in. But he has a submitted.
So he submitted this whole thing, okay, I'm sorry, it kind of looked like he already did, okay.
I didn't want to, I didn't want to lose his other paperwork, I wanted to keep him.
I'm sorry, did we have a motion for this?
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Next is the public hearing on additional appropriations.
So just to let everyone know, I did notice of additional preparation was published in a paper. The first item was for the public safety fund, the $10,000 that council instructed me to use for the equipment for lease. And then the other services, the amount $23,000, I went ahead and did an additional LexiPole contract. I realized after I'd already advertised that part of that is for the invoice for the next year, but I can also pay cover that for 2024. The next part of the additional appropriations is the FEMA 2020 AFG grant fund. That is for the fire equipment, that's CPA's and Professor. At budget time, I only budgeted $50,000 and we went a little bit over $198 over. So I'm just reporting that to you, Gina, that the additional.
So do I have to read this or is that good?
I was just explaining, you can read it.
Do I have to?
And then have, have opened the public comment.
Oh, so notice to, notice to taxpayers of appropriations. Notice is here by given, the taxpayers of the town of Brookfield, Franklin County, that the proper legal officers will consider the following additional appropriations in excess of the budget for the current year at their regular meeting place at the Franklin County Government Center 1010 Franklin Avenue, second floor meeting room, Brookfield, at 7:00 PM on the 18th day of May 2023. Public safety fund, other supplies for the equipment request, $10,000. Other services, which is the LexiPole contract, for $23,000. Reporting only for grant purposes, FEMA 2020 AFG grant fund for fire equipment, $198, for a total of $33,198. Taxpayers appearing at the meeting shall have the right to be heard. The additional appropriation is finally made. As finally made, will be referred to the Department of Local Government Finance, DLGF. The DLGF will make a written determination as to the sufficiency of funds to support the appropriations made within 15 days of receipt of a certified copy of the action taken dated May 1st, 2023. Gina Gilman, Brookfield Clerk Treasurer. So do we close the regular meeting or we just open the public hearing?
I'm just opening the public comment.
So do we motion for that or, sorry, this is the first thing I've ever done.
I think we did in the past, yes.
Can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Second. Did you say you made a motion?
I said, can I have a motion?
Yes.
Chuck made a motion to open the public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
John seconded, all in favor? All opposed? The public hearing is not open for comment for this additional appropriation. No comments? I move to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed?
Two seconds.
Close.
I don't know. So the public hearing is over, now?
Now we present that resolution that I've got there.
Oh.
And then easy to get and then make a motion for approval, if anyone's.
Okay, so the additional preparation resolution is 2023 dash two is the same of what I just read for the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So I'll make a motion.
Curtis made a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
John seconded, all in favor? All opposed? And we're all signing this. Okay. Next is res, okay, I did that, good. Amanda Kaiser, shaved ice truck use of town property.
I don't see her attendance.
Okay, table? Krista Fabian, third place event request. Please come to the podium and, you know your name, Chris?
Hi, thanks for seeing me, everyone calls me Chris. I'm very light, I've got two requests to, for events in Brookville. The first one being Brookville and Cap, which is August 5th, just from one to four. And we're asking to, Saint Mary's, the three of these years, this is her here, asking to shut the back shoes down from, I believe it was seven to eight. On the back there, with keeping hair, hair works salon right next to us. Her ride will open and anybody that needs to get in and out, we can use fences and we can get in and out. As they please. The next one being the Great Pumpkin Roll Ride. This is 300 attendees we had last year, bicyclists from all over the country. And there's like a 30 mile ride, a 47, I believe, and 60 mile ride. Then we all end up back in Brookville. So no street closure, it's just heavy traffic.
When is that?
That is September 30th.
And then, is that all day?
No, just, it's just in the morning. So it'll end around 11:00. Between, I mean, it's, it is a 30, I believe, 47 and 60 mile ride. So people start very early in the morning, so they would end between 7:00 to noon, but no street closure there, just heavy traffic from, with bicyclists from Saint Mary's to Third Place, the back alley there.
So do you need any police support or anything like that for that?
I do not, we certainly have a lot of volunteers going up with this, so. I'm sorry, I will add that last year, I think they asked Brent Reilly if they could use the Zimmer Building for parking for bicyclists. So we did have, I don't even know how many people, we filled up the parking lot with cars last year. So I don't know if they're interested in doing that, there were no issues, they weren't that great. So I would just keep that in mind. So just kind of park early in the night, early in the morning?
Why would they go all the way to the Zimmer Building? Why not the municipal lot? I mean, it's a lot closer to Third Place.
I don't know. I just felt that they.
Are you talking about parking cars?
No.
Oh, like their support cars or something?
I don't know, it was just a whole parking lot, full of car stations.
Okay, well, if that's an issue, can you just come back and let us know?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Is there a motion then to approve the closure of, it's probably a street back there, right? From 7:00 to 8:00?
Correct.
On August 5th, from one to four?
I'm making that motion.
Tom made a motion to approve the closure?
I'll second.
Curtis seconded, all in favor? All opposed? A motion approved, so you'll just let us know about the pumpkin, I mean, the. A motion approved. So, you'll just let us know about the pumpkin, I mean, the bike people, about closing the, or using a parking lot.
Okay. So, I'm sorry to get off on a tangent.
I'm sorry. If you just let us know if you need a parking lot for the bikes.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you. And this little...
We're just going to drop that off today.
Yeah.
The afternoon.
I'm familiar. I talked to him.
I just wanted to give that because I didn't know if you meant for...
Yes. I'll, I'll, I talked to him on the phone. Okay, so this is a mockup of the lines. Sorry for the public. It's just, you guys can come up and see this after if you want. So, this is a mockup of all the striping that is proposed to be done on 5th, 4th, and Progress Street. As you know, the road is done, so we have to figure out the striping. So, one of the things that the board can consider is that this is one idea. So, what I found out is that when you make parking lines that are straight in at a 90-degree angle, you can fit a lot more parking spaces versus lines that go in at an angle. So, when you angle parking spaces, you can't fit as many parking spaces in one area, but when you angle parking spaces in, it's much easier for people to get in and out, right? You don't have to make that hard turn to get into the parking spot. So, considering that 4th, 5th, and Progress was redone, and we've been through all this parking, parking questions for quite some time, before the striping company went ahead and did what their proposal is, they asked, do you like this proposal, or do you want us to change some of the angled parking on here to straight parking? So, when Brent looked at this, he decided that, along with talking with the company itself, is he's got 19 parking spots on the top right of the picture. They're all angled. So, if we decided to, instead of angling them to make them straight, he could possibly fit in additional parking spaces. He said maybe additional six, but I suggested that maybe, maybe we make them straight parking spots after the entrance into the bank, and they just make those last, I don't know, maybe seven or eight straight, and then you could fit more as you go down the alley. But he said that was an option that we could decide on. And then further down, where it says five angled, that's where the Valley House is. They're angled right now, but if we could decide to make those straight, he could probably add two more up against the building, just like further, further up, it says seven that are straight, you know, he could make those other, on the other side of the doors, I think seven would fit there as well, if we decided to, to do them straight instead of angled. So, before we got this, before they started, I just wanted to make sure that the council was involved with the decision-making.
What, what's a John has parking? Does it say?
So, they lost a couple of spots because of the one-way, so they lost them towards Main Street. Do you guys not have copies of this?
Yeah.
Okay.
I didn't watch.
I'm sorry. So, they lost a couple, but they generally going to have, you know, their angle. So, they lost a couple on that side, but then, of course, on Georgia's Pharmacy side, they gained a couple, because now there's angled parking against his building, is in the photo. And Brent, the striping company, both said, you can't really make those straight next to Georgia's because there's an underfloor. So, those are kind of the, so straight parking spots would give us more, a few more, and angled parking spots would give us less, but it's easier to get in and out. So, this would, this configuration right here would give us 68 spots in that back area.
How many apartments do they have in the building?
How many apartments are in the building?
Forty.
All of those north or south sides, who has the access, what would it do there?
I think that Brent and I decided that they just angled them the wrong way, so they're going to have to angle them the other way.
Yes.
Not meaning, those are not spots. It means the person that drew this with a, basically a pen, just angled it the wrong way, and they're going to angle it the right way, so you can come in like that.
So, what do we need here? Do we need a motion?
Oh, we can make lots of motions. You can say, just approve this picture. You can say, let's, let's get more in the two areas that Brent recommended to add more of the straight spots instead of the angle, because the picture has it all, has those two areas angled, or just approve the picture as it is, or leave it up to Brent, or just want to make sure that he was involved.
I could look to Brent.
I agree.
I'll make a motion to all the authorities, make a final decision in the hands of the board.
That's it.
All in favor? All opposed?
Here.
Okay. So, one of the things I mentioned earlier is that Lynn wasn't able to make our executive session that we initially scheduled. So, she'd like us to make another executive session for next week. She's available any day except for Tuesday, so with everyone here, just wanted to make sure that we scheduled it on a time when everybody could be there. So, is there, is everybody available, like, say, Monday at? You, you have to pick the time, all right?
I can probably, early, maybe at 5:30.
5:30. So, you want to make it at 6?
Six is fine.
Is everybody available Monday at 6?
The 22nd, this Monday.
The 22nd?
22nd.
I actually, I need another day to post.
Yeah.
Because I can't use the...
Oh, sorry. That's right.
I have this tomorrow. The earliest we can do is Tuesday.
That's fine. Tuesday, there's a council meeting in this room, so we can't do that. Oh, we could have it at our place, right? So, there, oh, she's, she's not available Tuesday. Sorry. That's fine. So, Wednesday at 6? Still okay? So, how about Wednesday at 6? Okay? Okay. So, we'll do our next executive. And Gina, that'll be, add in there the, the part of the code that talks about litigation, which she wants to update us on, the litigation as well. So, there'll be two reasons for the executive session. So, that's May 24th at 6:00 PM in the town building. Okay, thank you. Next, I just want to talk about the CLG. So, the DNR has a program called Certified Local Government. It's a program for historical credits, historical grants. We meet all the requirements already, but we haven't submitted the application. One of the things, if we get designated as a Certified Local Government with DNR, is that we would get priority on any historical grants that we submitted, because they have to give a certain number out to communities that are certified as CLGs. And then, instead of paying 50/50 with matching funds, we would only pay, they would pay 60 and we would pay 40, so it'd get just a reduced amount on any grants that we applied for. So, I just wanted to know if the council is interested in applying for that and to get the Historic Preservation Commission on, on board with doing that with us.
Is what concerned us?
Yeah, I guess.
I think it's a good idea.
Well, if there's no objection, motion passed. Okay. Motion passed. We'll, we'll look into that and get the Historic Preservation Commission, Jess, if you can make sure you guys talk about that, any requirements we have to do. Next, just want to remind the public that we're opening the bids for the Preserve of Main Street Grant on May 25th at 10 o'clock in the town building. I want to understand, ARA has already advertised that, so Jess, if you can just make sure that's posted and advertised.
Sure.
So, that is open to the public, and you can come to that. The next thing I just want to talk about was the Affordable Connectivity Program. There is a program out there for people that are having trouble paying internet. There's a link, if you just look up Affordable Connectivity Program, you can apply for help with your internet bills. That's out there. A lot of people don't know about it, but there's kind of a push to do that. The next is, I just want to get back with the public about the requirement that Curtis brought up about the town, the president and council being involved with the budget process. In Indiana Code 36-5-3-3, and in the Indiana Electoral Municipal Officials Handbook, both states that the council president should meet with the treasurer and department heads prior to submitting their budgets to the full legislature, and that would be this body. It was said that that wasn't the case, and it actually is, so. Last but not least, the day the pool is opening is?
May 27th.
May 27th at, what time? Noon? Great. Wonderful. That's all I have. Is there any other issues to?
I just want to say I did find my email of CF1's, and I forward them, so I'll put them on the next agenda. I apologize.
That's okay. Thank you. Any other issues for any council members?
Yeah, I was hoping to say, last meeting was kind of like a circus on the other side. People got upset because I made my vote. I'll be honest with you right now, I apologized yesterday already about it. Things got twisted and turned, and not the way I meant to be. There was no collusion involved. I voted, what I vote, I speak for, what I say is right. I stand for what I stand for. Try to be fair and just, do things correctly. I do not attack any individual on this floor or the public.
Thank you. Any other?
I have a comment. Did someone keep you a double?
Sorry.
Okay, let's, Earl made his comment. Let's keep this business-oriented. Who made this comment? This, we're not talking about this. No, you're out of order. You're out of order. You're out of order. You're out of order. We're not doing this. Are there any public comments about what has gone on today that you would like to make for 10 minutes? No public comments?
Make a motion, Julie.
Sorry, hold on. Do you guys, I'm sorry.
I've seen, I, I, Roy, I think, from SMA called me today. They do, like, mobile checkups for their employees. It's June 1st. They called me today. They rent a bus, I guess, and park back on Progress Street. Not sure why. Not sure why they don't use the Thanks Parking Lot. However, they asked if they can park on the backside of Progress Streets. I don't have the exact location by gourries, but in the corner, I think. They didn't really give the exact location of Step Plus. That would obviously be contingent upon striping in that area.
When is this going to happen?
June 1st.
I'm sorry. So, what do they want from us?
I think they want Brent to put cones up in five to six spaces on the back of Progress Street towards the far end where she said by 4th Street, and then that mobile clinic will be parked there for their employees.
Starting at 8:15 AM.
What's a mobile clinic? Is it for medical stuff?
It's just for their bank employees. Yeah. They do checkups.
Medical screening.
Why can't they? Okay, so...
But I don't know what's striping. It's, so obviously, once we figure that out, I will actually do that.
I made a motion to approve your plus contingent on striping.
I second.
For future, all agenda items that we vote on must be on the agenda. This is not on the agenda, but we're voting on it. So, I'd like for future to be put on the agenda before the meeting.
We'll wait to them, but I just thought of the timeframe.
Yes, Roger that. Yeah. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passed. Anything else, Jess?
No.
Gina?
We made 10.
I undertake a motion to adjourn.
You can.
I already asked.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Terminated motion to adjourn. Curtis seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried.